We are here as a committee council as a whole tonight for a presentation from our architectural firm of POD Design LLC for the renderings of Proudy Plaza downtown to aid us in design and final plans as far as the streetscape downtown. I will turn it over to Mr. Tiderton and then he can turn it over to our consultants.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very briefly, this is a design discussion regarding Proudy Plaza. The council members and the public might recall, or those that were participating, we've had several meetings and opportunities in the past probably year or more regarding suggestions, comments, concerns regarding our streetscape, upcoming streetscape project. One theme that we heard at the, at all of the sessions, as well as any of the input that we got, related to doing something with Proudy Plaza, not to include a permanent stage, but to, you know, enhance it as part of the overall project. On March 10th, you will have a presentation by LJB that is designing, doing the design documents for the streetscape project. And leading up to that, we asked POD Designs to come in and give us some ideas and a recommendation on what they thought Proudy Plaza might transition into. And so they are here tonight, Steve, who owns the POD Design, and Christian in his office. I'd like to ask them to come up and just go through a presentation and show you what they are recommending and why.
Or just Christian?
Or just Christian?
Well, we'll both take your questions. I'm Christian with POD Design. Good evening, everyone. I'll go through the presentation fairly quickly, just so that way we have plenty of time for questions and we can go back through the slides. And if you want to linger or go through any of, any of the different renderings that we have for you here tonight. This is a fairly conceptual presentation and we'll kind of go through a little bit of the history of the site as we know it. And then basically what we'll do is we'll show you a few renderings, both kind of how we envision the project working both on a day-to-day basis and then also during one of the many festivals or concerts that you guys use in the Plaza already. So as many of you may be aware, there was a building there for a number of years that did eventually burn down. But it was a bit of the history of the site that we felt like was important to kind of completing the square that was there. So you'll see some kind of acknowledgement of that in the designs that we have. One of the other things that we kind of looked at too was these circular planters that are part of the square that have kind of been there in some iteration over the years. So that also kind of ties into some of the suggestions that we're proposing. And then obviously the site as it is today.
We can get him a chair, just bring him a chair. Rosemary, they want you to move instead of him. Guess you're out of luck.
We'll be happy to go through, back to any of these slides again to get a closer look once I'm done, kind of giving my spiel. So, you know, we're familiar with the weekly concerts and the Showmobile that comes there. So that was obviously a very key component in considering how we planned out the space. Also larger events such as the Strawberry Festival and thinking how this space kind of ties in with the rest of the public square and how it can be used during some of those just busier events. These are just a few images that we use for kind of some inspiration. You know, the potential for an interactive water feature, the different lighting components that could help activate the space in the evenings. You know, looking at a mix of more traditional materials, but also potentially done with a few more contemporary accents so that it both ties in with the existing context of the public square and then also making it very practical for the variety of different uses throughout the year. This is a plan that I'm sure many of you guys have seen before, that LGB is working on and focused on the main square with Proudy Plaza up here. We looked at how our, that Proudy Plaza can kind of tie in seamlessly with those improvements that are, that are being looked at. So again, some of the things that we looked at were the addition of an interactive fountain that could be turned off for those concerts and other things so that it works both for kind of an everyday use, to kind of draw people, but then doesn't take up space during an event. Using again, traditional materials, clay brick pavers, limestone, different things that are found in a lot of the buildings that are, make up the square and the rest of the kind of downtown area. We are looking at maybe adding some more trees, kind of back to the proposed layout. That kind of again plays off of those four trees that were kind of in a lot of the different iterations of the square over the years. And then the other thing that we're looking at is potentially creating some sort of a gateway, kind of an edge to kind of fill what is sort of like a missing tooth in the square. So we're kind of creating that gateway that kind of acts as sort of like where a building facade would have been, but then does double duty as sort of announcing Proudy Plaza. So again, these first renderings will kind of show kind of how we could see the space working just kind of on an everyday weekend use. And then the next ones will kind of show it as it might happen during a concert. So what you'll see is we have an interactive fountain that kind of anchors the corner of the square. We're, you know, mostly kind of suggesting sort of like a red brick clay paver with some accents of potentially like a nice warm limestone color. And then down here would be sort of the gateway, which you'll see in some of the next views that kind of help pay homage to the old buildings that used to be there. So this is kind of a view sort of from the parking lot, looking back towards the square. So again, you'll see, here's another view of the fountain. What we've tried to do is introduce some granite seating so that that works for kind of an everyday use so that when people are visiting downtown, they have a place to hang out in nice weather. It also then does double duty as seating for a concert so that when the Showmobile is there, not everybody has to necessarily bring a chair. But we did try to keep as much space as possible, you know, so that when people are bringing chairs, you kind of have a lot of flexibility for how that space can be utilized. We've shown it kind of right here, and so you'll see that in some of the next renderings where we show it during a concert. Here's that same view, but kind of in the evening where you can see we've looked at, maybe there could be some projection lighting that could, you know, add some interest to kind of draw people in in the evenings, in the summertime. Really kind of soft lighting as far as like lighting the uplight of the trees, you know, traditional light fixtures that kind of match what's already used in the public square. This is kind of the view from Main Street, again, an idea of what potentially a gateway could look like into Proudy Plaza. Again, you know, recommending more traditional materials of limestone and brick. We have two versions here, one with and one without sort of an archway that goes over there. So some different versions of that. We also looked at, you know, moving the plaque that's out there today that commemorates Mr. Proudy to the gateway. And then again, another view, potentially relocating the existing light or block that's out there to kind of tie in with that gateway feature. Another view in the evening, kind of overlooking from the fountain in the square. And then here's another closer look at what that interactive fountain would be. One of the things that we tried to do, what we are suggesting is that this would actually be sunken just a little bit, maybe 12 inches. What it allows us to do is that the chairs that would be around it, then you can kind of overlook that seat wall that we're showing here. Again, we're trying to maximize views as much as possible for when there is a concert going on so that nothing is really obstructing your view. And you'll see that in some of the next images. And then this is just kind of a view looking from sort of inside of that, inside of the Plaza, back towards Main Street. Again, we have some granite seating, just a mixture of different paving styles and some movable seating that can either get pushed out of the way for different concerts or other events and then a little bit of that more permanent seating. So here you can see, we're starting to show where the Showmobile would be positioned, although there's obviously flexibility where, how that would get located, depending on the size and scale of what that concert or event might be. And we can also obviously close down this section of parking for even larger events. So there's a lot of flexibility in how that Plaza space works. One of the things that we also looked at pretty closely was the location of different trees within the Plaza, both to help provide shade for those events during the summertime, but also to not obstruct any views. So we were, tried to be pretty mindful about how we located those so that there are high canopy trees that you can look under and that there weren't too many so that during the show, they weren't blocking your view. So this is from a little bit further out and then kind of zooming in. You can see how many people can actually sit in there. And all of the landscape and everything that we have shown is very low, low maintenance, but also physically low so that it doesn't block you whether you're standing or if you are bringing your own chair to sit and enjoy one of the shows. As I was saying earlier, this is where that fountain, that interactive fountain would, could potentially be. That's something that could be turned off for concerts. Again, that whole space then just becomes more Plaza space that can be filled up with people and chairs and really provides a lot of space for one of those, one of those events. I think this is our last image. So again, I know I went through that somewhat quickly, but I'm happy to go back through any of the images.
Have you been to one of our events when we have a concert?
I have not personally.
Have you been to any of your teams?
Yes. We also looked at sort of the space that's currently used there now, like because the parking is pushed all the way up into the corner. So when we're looking at, at it right now, that parking kind of fills in this whole space. And so you're kind of, a lot of people end up sort of putting their chairs in some of those parking.
Yeah, the streets shut down.
Yeah, yeah. And so this.
I don't think that causes a big problem if they shut the street.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
So I mean, pushing it back for.
So if you have, like where that right car is, if someone is sitting in a lawn chair, they could see those two right cars, are they going to be able to see the stage?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they wouldn't on the left side because, or may on the right side where that dark gray car is? That, you got blocked by the tree.
So all of the trees that we're suggesting would be limped up really high so that when you're seated, you.
So you're talking about trees that are 25 to 30 feet tall, right?
Well, we'd like them to get there that, at some point, but what we can do is.
Well, I mean, based on your drawing, you've got some people so tall. And then you've got another, you've stacked another person on top of this, so you've got 12 feet to get to where the limbs are and then you've got all the covers. So those trees are, in your drawings are probably that 25 to 30 foot tall range.
Absolutely.
I mean, what's the cost for a tree like that?
Well, they don't, they would have to go in at that side of that 25 foot tall. But what we would try to do is get trees that are at a minimum, you know, six to eight feet of clearance underneath the canopy.
So you're still talking 20 feet? Yeah, okay.
Or it moves those sidelines until the trees get that high.
If they live that long.
Brad will give you time. Brad will wait, will give you time to ask your questions in a little bit.
We did, we were also looking at the spacing between the trees so that, you know, again, as you can see, we're trying to make sure that we're not, that there's plenty of space in front of all of those trees, but that there are plenty of spaces in between those that, you know, if you are backwards of that, it really isn't blocking anything.
Question on the landscaping. Okay, our friends to the west, the county, about five years ago, landscaped their entire area around the courthouse. And they did a lot of little plantings and trees and this type of thing. And they found out that a lot of stuff is now overgrown because it's hard to take care of.
Yeah.
And the city doesn't have, a lot of the time in the summer, we have, we don't have regular city employees. We have contract employees come in and do mowing and this type of thing. And I say at various skill levels. And so the question is, you know, again, this looks like this thing, I mean, based on what the county did and what your drawings are showing here, in my opinion, this thing is like way over. I mean, it looks nice.
Yeah.
But it's, I mean, there's a lot of things to take care of. And then the other question I have is they have trees along the backside in front of the mural. That mural is a nationally recognized piece of art. And when you plant, number one, if you're planting trees, I mean, we've got herbividy uprights right now. And those, again, they block some of the mural. The trees obviously would do that. And then the other thing is if the trees live, you know, then planting a tree that close to a building has a tendency to undermine the foundation. Now, I hate to say this, I've been around a little bit. When they built that wall, the reason they built that wall, that wall is separate from the Mayflower building. And the reason they built that wall is because the Mayflower building had damage from the fires. And so the city fathers decided to, you know, they built some sort of a foundation, built this brick wall up. But any damage to that foundation caused by planting like trees over time would essentially weaken the foundation, the whole wall come down. So that's, that's one concern. But again, so I don't think we need to, along the side of the building, to block that mural with the trees. So that'd be something else. And then the other question I have is, is that where's the grass on this thing? I think a lot of people have gotten used to Proudy being a grass area. The problem in the summertime is that, you know, July, August, you know, that gets a lot of sun. And so that cement is going to get hot. And you, I mean, you, you know, I think it'd be, the grass, you know, is, is, I don't know if we water that grass or not, but anyway, it remains green most of the summer. And, you know, it is, grass is much cooler than cement and bricks. Okay. And then the other question I have is, is that, you know, we're pulling that, you call it a Showmobile, it's a portable stage. And that is taken in and out of the Proudy Plaza on a regular basis. And any cement or brick work that we have has to be structured like a street. Because when you look at the sidewalk now around Proudy Plaza, there's chips and cracks and everything else from those trucks that we use to move the Showmobile in and out of there. And then we bring in, in the winter, we bring in our Santa House. And the same thing, we use a truck to get that Santa House in there and it's out. And like I say, so there's, you know, essentially there's potential unless these, this concrete and brick is, if it's still there, to, it must be the same strength as a street. And I don't know if we've taken that into consideration on our construction. And then of course, the other thing, I know when I built my, my house, I got a 10-year warranty on the concrete, both labor and the actual concrete. And then when I built my patio, the bricks have a lifetime warranty, both labor and materials. And so I'm assuming. Go ahead.
Just wanted to answer a few of the questions. Do we have more?
No, that's, that's if I may think of something else.
Well, I guess the thing I wanted to just kind of say first is that this is very conceptual still. So this is, we're welcoming all this feedback. This is not. So as far as like construction and all that stuff, we have.
You have no idea.
No, no, we've thought about that, but not in a great detail. Like we have not picked bricks, we're not at that stage yet. So at this point, we're looking for input on how we would potentially change and modify and continue to develop this design. And as far as planting, oh, so that's what we're here for tonight. So these are all great questions and that's what we're looking for. So, you know, kind of going back to the planting, right now it's conceptual. You know, we have picked specific plants, we have not picked specific trees. We have had plenty of discussions with the city as far as if you want this to be low maintenance, this would be a lot of more ground covers and types of things. We would want to plant a lot of shrubs that a lot of times get overgrown because they don't get trimmed. And so we would want to work with the city to make sure that whatever we're planting can easily be maintained.
And will account for growth over time.
Exactly, exactly. So looking at specific tree types, there's a lot, you know, that's one of the biggest things is that when we're picking trees, making sure that maybe that there are things that can grow tall that you can see under them, that, you know, that we're not planting things that are too close to the building. So all of those things would 100% be taken into consideration. You know, we were looking at when we're doing, we're pulling out these beds. Pulling out these beds quite substantially away from the building. And all of those things, I mean, this is, you know, that's easily 20, 30 feet from, you know, I mean, this is an 18-foot parking bay. So, you know, at its wide, it's probably about 20 feet away from the building. And so again, all these locations are not finalized as far as where those trees are going. And that's the kind of stuff that we are looking for tonight. Get that input from everybody. I know you mentioned no lawn. We did not include lawn in this concept. We were asked, you know, just to kind of look initially at more of a paved Plaza version that would tie in with the improvements that are happening with the rest of the public square. We would construct that as it basically works straight. It would be concrete with the brick paving on top of that. And again, those are not, we haven't picked any of those things. So if, you know, the brick and the limestone aren't the way that people are feeling, we can, you know, take a look at some other options. But these are, and I do realize that these look very polished and finished. Really, the reason that we do that is mostly for scale so that you can see how much people can fit into a place like this. That was kind of the main point that we worked initially looking at was to make sure that we're providing the space that can accommodate people. And it's also comfortable lighting the things because we want to ensure that, you know, when there isn't a concert happening, that people want to hang out here. So creating a few, you know, milks and cranes places for people so they don't have to bring a chair. Those were the things that we were trying to introduce that aren't there today. It is just a lawn space.
Well, we have picnic tables.
Yeah, but a little bit more shade, a little bit more of the kind of, you know, but these are all great questions that, you know, we want to, we want to get that feedback.
Yeah, I just, as I say again, I look at that and I'm thinking, wow, you know, that's going to be hot in the summer. That's all I can say. Appreciate you.
Mr. Chair, just to remind everybody, Jeff, you mentioned a few things. Number one, the herbivites were cleared out some time ago by the Mayflower when they did their redone. A year, year or so, yes. And so that, that was all touched up and painted behind. And the concept that we came up with was, with POD, was to, yes, minimize grass, but maximize landscaping largely on the periphery because, you know, there's, there's a lot of gathering that goes on. There's the picnic tables, they would come back out. We would, we would get umbrellas, but we'd also, they came up with a concept that supplements it with the tree shade as well and some casual, casual seating that I know they've worked with LJB and their team to integrate with what will be looked at March 10th. Just as a reminder, because you mentioned the grass, couple of, a couple of things with the grass. Yes, it was irrigated. The idea would be to have irrigation in the periphery so that those plants, you know, are as much self-irrigating and not having to go around and manually irrigate them like we have to do with our baskets and some of the other flowers downtown. And just primarily offer more hardscape for people to be able to gather without walking on the grass. The grasses, yes, we try to keep it as green as possible, but between all of the foot traffic as well as the vehicular traffic that comes and goes, you get ruts, you get bald spots. The grass is definitely, is very difficult to maintain. And I'm going to call him out because he's trying to hide in the, in the cornerback there. But our park superintendent is nodding vigorously right now. He may even have to come up to the podium in a minute, I'm just suggesting. So that's really when we challenged POD to look at it, that we, we tried to look at all of those and share the issues and the challenges that we've had, as well as what we've seen and what kind of feedback that we've gotten through the last couple of years that we've had the tables out, the picnic tables out, which have been very, very popular.
Can you go to Google Earth from here?
I would call on Jill, who's the expert on Google Earth. Because she's going to take the mouse anyway.
I'm sure Christian can do it as well.
Well, I can, I mean, because I think other people want to see it. But if you go to Google Earth, you can see that there's a, I mean, that there's path and the grass is really deteriorated. But I guess my main question while she's trying to find.
While she's trying to find that up to look at the grass, there's a series of handicap parking spots that are in the back. Are those in corporate, I just, I don't see where you're stopped.
That is the same, so we have that same.
Did you do Proudy Plaza?
I am at Proudy Plaza.
Yeah, but did Google Proudy Plaza? No, you did Troy. I understand. Google Proudy Plaza.
We don't, we don't, I don't have Google Earth downloaded.
Oh, you don't have Google Earth downloaded?
No, this is Google.
Okay, well, you can see there's a big path here. But anyways, my bigger question is those handicap spots that would be back here.
I think, I believe, are already gone because there's a dumpster here, I think, right?
Couple of, a couple of them are, yes.
Couple of them are, yeah, these two.
It didn't go past that spot. So is there still going to be an entrance coming in off of that parking lot? Well, I saw the one coming in from the front, right?
So, yeah, right, well, well, yes, that's where people are walking. That is the parking where people are walking, right there.
This is that, that edge. That edge where.
That's the parking coming back in from the handicapped. And then this, is that grass to the left and to the right? Ground cover. Ground cover.
Thank you. But, but those were, those were concerned that were brought in to make sure that any of that would be put there.
Bill.
Lynn, Lynn, Lynn.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll go back to our guys, but go ahead.
Okay. I just had a question. I do like the trees on the edges. I'm just wondering, when. I'm just wondering, when it gets to more of the middle there, are there other urban shade options that you could use other than trees?
There are, I, so, the challenge is that we want to make sure that there's flexibility for the showmobile to be able to get pulled in and come out. There has to be some maneuvering. So there needs to be a pretty wide space there for that to be able to both pull the portable stage in and then get the.
I guess I'm basically talking about where in the middle there seem to be trees further toward the Main Street entrance, right in there, and then around that seating area.
Yeah, not without adding a lot of extra poles usually. So if you're thinking like shade sales or pergolas or those type of things, they typically don't ever, you know, they only usually shade at a certain, usually like noon, you know, in the summer where the sun's coming right down. But those shadows move throughout the day. So it's usually less expensive and easier. And you also get a cooler environment because the trees aren't going to help keep the space cooler than any sort of man-made structure would. So they tend to be usually the better route for that type of a space. The nice thing with the way that the plaza is located, with how the sun kind of comes around, we try to locate, you know, all the trees here because that's where the sun is going to be casting most of the shadow then on that paved plaza space. So that's something that we are always trying to be very mindful of, is where are the shadows actually being cast? Honestly, the trees along the building were just to kind of help bring the scale down a little bit. They won't provide as much shade for the plaza. So, you know, if those need to be reduced to make sure that there's even more visibility to the mural, that doesn't really change, you know, these are actually, tend to be the more effective trees as far as being able to provide shade for residents during an event when they're hanging out, you know, enjoying ice cream or something.
Just one more quick question. It looks like then there's a real large tree right now.
Right, so the big, large tree will be removed.
It's already.
It's already been removed, okay.
I do have a question.
What would you like to do, Bill? Are you wanting the audience to?
Well, we're going to do, we're going to flip this for, just for the heck of it. Since the public's come out, I'm going to let them ask their questions first, and then we'll come back to everybody here unless it's a main emergency que, not an emergency question, but, you know, a vital one that needs to be answered before that. Is that all right?
Yes, sir. Name and address for the record.
Hello, everybody. My name is Brandon Osgastelli, I live at 509 Drury Lane. I do live in Troy and I work in Troy. I'm the general manager of Agavon Rye. Over the last 14 months, I've seen how the space is used downtown. I agree with this design. In the short term, the trees may block some of the use for some of the concerts. In the long term, this will be hugely beneficial for the downtown area, providing a place for the community to congregate for not just concerts, but for any number of events. That's really all I have. I appreciate the design, so.
And if I may, real quick, going back to one of the, just because you're speaking of those trees, you know, this is kind of what we're getting to, you know, the kind of existing conditions over there today, where there are large trees out there, you know, picking the right ones so that they provide shade but also don't block the view for concerts. So that will be something we'll work closely with the city. And trees of that scale are not impossible to come by. That's actually just a matter of making the proper selections.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Amy Brynich. I am the new executive director of Troy Main Street. And we met today with several of our downtown businesses and property owners and user groups for Proudly Plaza and shared these renderings with them to get some of their feedback. And I'd like to share that with you tonight. Overall, everyone really loved these renderings. They thought they were updated, modern, functional, allowed for multifunctional usage of the space. And then they loved the idea of, it needs to say Proudly Plaza. Really big, identifying, being proud of Mr. Proudly and everything that he's done in this community. The overall scope of the work, everyone thought that was great. They loved the paved area. While I'm a grass girl, love to get barefoot and walk in the grass, functionality for what we use Proudly Plaza for, the grass, just doesn't work. And it honestly costs a lot of money to maintain it. So they love the overall paved area. There was a question about maybe some additional public restrooms and vendor licenses for temporary vending. They love the structured seating options that could be used during programmed events and then as well as just ease of use throughout the week. Someone did say ditch the arch, but I think overall the rest of the group really loved it. And then making sure that we still kept those accessible parking spots available. Some likes in there, again, the seating, the arch dislikes the like, dislikes the lack of grass, but the water feature, a lot of us saw that as a safety issue, just being down at Proudly Plaza frequently and seeing that children are running around kind of unsupervised. If they're doing that in the water, potentially going out into the street in the parking areas, that was just a concern, and then maybe that would be a better use someplace else in another community park or Duke Park. A lot of us thought that the lack of green space is a good design feature for the way we do utilize it on a regular basis. It defines the space as a community gathering area, and then it offers a lot of better safety for community events. And I will say, I got to bring down Santa House this year and check on it every day. When we do get a lot of weather, that grass is terrible. People are going in and out of Santa House and slipping in sometimes two and three inches of water that are just standing in the grass because it just holds it, especially when it's cold. Let's see here. So concerns of drainage, durability, making sure that the stage can come in and out without doing those ruts. We've encountered that already, moving that in and out and whether or not we could even use it for programmed events. Appreciated, again, the seating areas, utilizing that space. And then the other one was just availability for a business cart to highlight local businesses in the downtown, whether that's a kiosk or something like that, so.
How many businesses, did you say you got a hold of?
We had 10 with us today, yeah.
Hello, Jason Adams, 428 Lincoln Avenue, nice to meet you. I was just looking at POD Design's website, I noticed you have headquarters in Shanghai. I was wondering if you could describe the relationship you have with them? How involved are they in designing the space here in Troy? My dog's favorite potty spot is right at the corner there. She's very concerned, thank you.
Our home office is actually in Columbus, Ohio. We did have a satellite campus in Shanghai for a number of years. We don't anymore. That basically fell through during the pandemic. One of the partners at POD Design was, yeah, former partners, was from China originally, but since retired.
Bradley Baron, 105 Crestwood Drive. I want to echo Mr. Schilling's concerns. Too much brick, too much brick. That brick does get hot in the summertime, and we have some scorching summers around here. I'd like to see the brick cut back a little bit, maybe have some more grass. And I remember several years ago, it was talked about building a permanent stage on Proudly Plaza. And I'd like to know why that is not a part of this design at this time. Because you would think if we're going to, we're worried about the ruts and we're worried about the concrete breaking if we decide to go all brick pavers, wouldn't it be better, more economical just to build a permanent stage? That way we don't have to worry about replacing the brick in 10 to 20 years when it does break down? Secondly, and this is a big one for me, in 1975, that plaza, as it sits today, along with the entire square, was placed on the National Register for Historic Places. And I'm concerned what you're proposing is a major design change which could lead to its delisting from the National Register. I'd like to know what due diligence you have taken with regards to the National Register of Historic Places listing to ensure that the square will remain on the National Historic Register. Thank you.
I was not aware that it was on the National Historic Registry, but that is absolutely something that we can take into consideration. Like we said, this is still conceptual, there are no construction documents for any of the stuff that you're looking at today. So I don't see why, because usually that tends to be more of a place location type of thing. I don't see why that would.
Well, I would even want to have to share some of the papers back down, they would be out with me, you know.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. Not all of the seating is concrete. We are kind of showing some of the more permanent seating. We were considering more of a granite type of seating for those seat walls, so something that will, you know, be able to stand and test the time. You know, we were pretty, looking very closely at all the different materials that are used on historic buildings. So we want to pull from all that and make sure that we're picking materials, particularly natural materials that will weather really well, handle through fall, the winters. Granite, you can't really do much better than that as far as that goes. It also tends to stay a lot cooler in the summer, so. Yeah, yeah, so those materials tend to stay a lot more cooler to the touch and just really are kind of the lookers. You know, I realize there's a lot of questions about materiality. Those are all things that, you know, when we're doing these types of things, we're trying to pick the best materials possible so that they hold up. A lot of times the bricks you see bantering are concrete bricks. You would recommend true plate brick paper like what's used in like cobble streets that have been around for hundreds of years. Those are the things that we would be looking to expect with these type of situations.
I can't hear, if you can't hear your question.
Yeah, we need to please come to the microphone and in your case, we'll reiterate the question. Anybody else, public?
Vivian Howe, 1242 Waterbury Place. I'm questioning, what is the purpose of having the water and having a 12-inch drop? And then the water won't be there when we have a concert? I find that, I find that that could be a falling problem, you know, tripping, whatever, just since the surface won't be flat all the way across? And what is the purpose of the water? Is that for the children to play in? Is it to help keep the ground a little cooler? I don't know, what's the purpose?
Again, great, great question. When I said that this was depressed a little bit, it'll be at a very gradual slope. So it won't be just like stepped down where you have to step into it. So basically from, you know, this down to where the wall is, would have a very gentle slope. And that's really just so that the seating that's here sits down just a little bit. So that way when people are using that during a concert, when people set up behind them, they can look over those people. So it's kind of trying to create that kind of amphitheater seating. It's very subtle grading, but it usually has a pretty big impact as far as the effectiveness of, you know, being able to make sure as many people can see what's going on during a show. As far as the why to the fountain, I think it is a nice draw for families. One of the things that we were looking at was that this would actually be only on, it would be activated by a button. So we've done these before. We've got some examples in the reference imagery that we were looking at earlier where these jets don't actually turn on until they're activated. So otherwise they're not being used. But it's also a nice way, they could be on a timer. It's just, it also helps drown out a little bit of traffic noise for people that would be utilizing the plaza during mealtime. So it, you know, it's not something that we feel like, you know, has to be there. It was just something that we were asked to take a look at to see if that would be of interest. So that's where we're getting that feedback today, so.
Is anybody else, before we go to the other side?
I'm fine taking turns.
I just wanted to confirm. I lived in Seattle for more than a decade and have seen a lot of these projects come in and do a lot of really good in community areas. The water feature specifically, like in a giant city like Seattle, being able to have those types of things does bring community to that area and does help with noise. And if we're doing, if we're getting rid of the grass, which to me serves no purpose other than to make mud in that area, and we are putting planters in with native plants, native roots go deeper, they're going to hold the ground in place better, they're going to help absorb the water, it's going to help with the drainage off of the area. I'm not, what is your job, sir?
I'm the design director at POD Design.
Okay, I am not a design director at POD Design. But I have seen these things in practice and I know that they do actually work and they are good for the community and the environment. I do, and again, like I mentioned before, the trees themselves, for a couple of years, maybe an issue with a V where you can't see the stage, and we have that now. Like people still, if you're sitting behind somebody who's six and a half feet tall, you're going to move a little bit to the side. Legitimately, I have my own like tweaks that I would do to the design, but overall, I do think that this will be a huge benefit to downtown.
Anyone else, anyone else? We got people from Chamber of Commerce, we have county commissioner, we have park director, we have park departments, as well as, any of those want to add any questions? Former councilman, Mr. Tremble.
Doug Tremble, 177 Littlejohn Road. I have a safety concern for pedestrians. You have some bollards I saw there and some knee walls. You looked at that to make sure you have enough for the safety of the citizens? You want to address that?
So that will be something that we will be working with alongside with the rest of the design team for the public square. They've got an entire bollard plan that they're working on. So we'll be tying in with that to make sure that we have, you know, that all covered. We are, we were looking, and I'm kind of glad that you brought that up, you know, we were looking.
We were looking at these seat walls are kind of a way to help create a little bit of a buffer from the street. So they're not going to prevent someone from going around it, but if you're there with some little ones, you know, especially if you were using the fountain or you're just hanging out there, you know, it kind of provides these smaller spaces that kind of give you a little bit more control over the kiddos, you know, while you're there. There's not a great way to kind of, you know, we're not trying to fence off the entire plaza, but it provides a little bit more than there is today.
All right, Jeremy Drake, City of Troy, Park Superintendent. Just a couple of things I want to touch on, some of the questions and concerns we've heard. One of the things that we've heard tonight is the concern over, I know the county courthouse and the safety building, the plants that have overgrown there already. And I know they do a fantastic job of keeping that area maintained, but realizing that shrubs are a very high-maintenance landscape item that we would put into flowerbeds. So we have to touch those frequently to trim those back. So we've specifically asked the design team to stay away from shrubs and to go more with perennials and low-growing plants that we don't have to be trimming continuously. Something about the grass, we've heard a lot of comments back and forth about grass, no grass. So a couple of things about the grass, and we've already had, I know Amy touched on it, where we've had programmed events where we need to get the showmobile in and out. And if it's too wet, we're not able to move the showmobile back onto Proudly Plaza. Say it's, we've got some weekends where we've got dual events all in one weekend and we've got to move it off like on a Friday and move it back in on a Sunday. Well, if we've had too much rain during the week or prior, right prior to the weekend, we've not been able to move the showmobile back on to Proudly Plaza. So the pavers actually give us more functionality and flexibility with that space by being able to allow us to move that showmobile on and off at free will whenever we need to for whatever's programmed for the space. The other thing to consider with the grass, the turf grasses, it does. At Christmas time, if we've got a freeze and then a thaw and then maybe a rain, we get standing water where it can't drain properly. So then we've got mud issues. So we've got ruts that are created by the showmobile, mud issues in high-traffic, foot-traffic areas. So those are some concerns with putting turf grass back rather than more of a hardscape. Something to consider about the shade and the temperature of the bricks. I know that's come up a lot. So the International Society of Arbiculture has some real data that they have done in taking temperatures of shaded areas. And I can provide some of that data that shows, and it's been, it's mentioned that trees are a natural air conditioner, they truly do. They truly do, by the, by, through photosynthesis and, and, you know, collecting moisture from the air and so forth, and then casting that shade, they do truly have a cooling effect. So in this design, you'll notice that there is a lot of shade canopy that actually covers the hardscape, and that was the whole idea. Yes, we do lose that turf grass, but turf grass itself doesn't really offer much in the way of, of air conditioning and cooling. Trees do. So by having more of the hardscape covered in a shade canopy provided by the trees, that takes care of that and helps cool that, what could otherwise be a hotter surface if it was left out in full sun. What else was touched on? Trees close to the building. So when Troy Memorial Stadium was first redone back in the early 2000s, we went in, I was part of the crew that went in and planted Norway maples right in front of Troy Memorial Stadium, just within a few feet. I know you mentioned up to 20 feet off of that mural wall. Troy Memorial Stadium, I think that bed is probably eight feet at the most, and we've now got 20 plus year old, probably 22 year old Norway maples that are still growing right in front of Troy Memorial Stadium. We've, at, at first, it takes some time to go in and limb those off the back to keep them off of the building, but from the front, you would not know that they're growing so close to the building and, or the structure with no damage being done to it. And Norway maples are terrible species to choose that close to a building, but we made it work and, and they actually look really, really well. And to his point, yes, things like frontier elm or some of the other elms that are more upright and base shape growing, that grow up and out rather than spreading, those are the kind of things we'd be looking for, for effective species to put in. Zelkovas, some of those others that are going to be more upright. London plane would be a really good one that would work in that area. The other thing I'll touch on, the last thing, is flower beds, make no mistake about it, planting beds with mulch are extremely labor intensive to keep weeds out of. So one of the things we asked the design team was full ground cover, like a full carpet of loriapi or a creeping ground cover that's somewhat foot tolerant, that can handle some light foot traffic through it and, and won't tramp, tramp it down and won't kill it. But that also allows a little bit of a cooler effect, but then also lower maintenance. So we're not having to go in and handpick weeds and try to spray between plantings and those kind of things. More of a perennial ground cover that will fill in full. So hopefully I touched on, those are kinds, I think, some of the main concerns that, that I heard tonight and just wanted to touch on those. Thank you.
Jordan Emrick, Park Board. I think I'm the lone park board person in attendance tonight. But no, echo some of the, the comments that Jeremy made. You know, right now we use this property primarily for special events. We get the, the mobile stage up there at times, but other than that, really it's limited to, you know, a couple picnic tables that are, that are very popular in the summer. So anything that kind of brings more people down and I think creates a kind of centralized landing spot for downtown, I'm definitely in, in favor of and supportive of. As a father of two kids, when we go downtown on a Saturday morning and you see us bouncing around to all the different restaurants, and we pick up our little food at Haron's, and then we have to go to Grandpa Joe's and do all that kind of thing, and go to Gavainry to finish it off, there's really not a landing spot for us to sit down as a family. And so I kind of really enjoy the fact that there's permanent seating here. It kind of gives you a landing spot for Troy. And then the shade's a big, big thing. You know, we cut down that, the tree that was there for so long, and that really took up a lot of space and a lot of the shade. So kind of look forward to the design here and some of the things that we're, we're shown with the shade. That's kind of rings home for us, too. So, anything else, Jeremy? I mean, I know the water thing, the water feature got brought up. I mean, that's, we have a park survey that's out there right now. Anybody can go on and fill it out at any point. It's always one of the top two, three things that's asked about for us from a park standpoint, too. Thanks.
Same day, do you have any questions? No one else? With, or Mr.?
Pierce.
Mr. Pierce, can I question?
Thank you. Can you walk me through the parking, uh?
Current parking?
Current parking situation and then what we're looking at doing here?
Sure. We are not proposing changing any of the parking. You can kind of see it here, like the parking that's back here would not be changed from what it is today. As it was pointed out, I think there is a dumpster that might be located right here, but our, we have not, we haven't encroached upon that in any way. And then this is all the, the parking that's out front is what was shown in the previous plan, so we're not modifying that in any way from what was already, you know, presented.
But are you asking how many spots are there currently?
Do you know how many spots are there currently?
Uh, it is the same, seven, like route here.
So it'll be the same no matter what?
Yeah.
Seventeen now, seventeen then.
If I remember correctly.
And that, that's part of the discussion on March 10th. They didn't, they didn't do any redesign of any of the parking in the quad, nor are they touching any of the ADA spots that are behind, uh, behind Agave and Rye.
Who's, who's that? These guys or March 10?
Pod did not, LJB, they didn't change anything from what they've already shown us in previous presentations.
Right. Would, do you know how many parking spots are in that quadrant right now, Patrick?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
With that design plan?
And now.
But today?
I believe it's also seventeen from what I counted. I don't think we've lost any, but again, March 10th, we can confirm that with LJB when they come in.
Okay. Thank you. And that was my only question.
I, I was just going to say, I'm in support of highlighting Proudy Plaza. I agree with Mr. Emrick there that there's not a landing spot as people come downtown, and the more we can make it welcoming will be good. And I do like the water feature. I like the trees there. I think it's a good concept to really start us to make it more of a gathering spot. And I do agree with whoever highlighted that we need to have proudy, the gate proudy on there, I think is definitely a good idea, an entrance to that, yeah.
So you like that one, not the other option?
Yep. I like this option. And I think it would just change, like the Gavainry stated, it does change the environment when people come downtown and they can gather and get food or sit down. And there's multiple purposes where right now, go to the picture now of what it looks like. There's two picnic tables. So if those picnic tables are used, where are you sitting? Where are you going? You just go back to your car and go home. So I think it really, like, to me, this is very boring, to start really, say, hey, come down here and be a part of our downtown. So I'm for the concept that we have.
Mr. Whitten, anything?
I know we still have the design meeting coming up for the square itself, which I assume will be a continuation of the West Main Street project where we use stamped concrete. I'm assuming we might go down that same path for the square itself. So if we're going to move to brick for the plaza, I just want to make sure we have a way of tying that in, so it's not a major difference between the stamped concrete that will probably, we might end up doing in the square, I'm assuming.
Absolutely. We'll be working alongside them to make sure that everything that's shown, I don't know that they've actually picked, I'm not aware that we, they've picked the final, final products, but they are showing a mixture of, you know, concrete and brick and stamped concrete, I think, in this plan. We are, you know, making some suggestions and we'll work and make sure that everything kind of dovetails together so that whatever is used, you know, for the rest of the square is kind of integrated within the plaza.
And overall, I think it's a well thought out, I like the idea, I like the idea of the more hardscape and less grass. That's something I like seeing.
Mr. Phillips?
Generally, I, I, I think this is a very good, and like Mr. Whitten just said, it's a well thought out plan, even if it, in its infancy, but with these renderings. One thing that, is it possible to put anchor points? One of the events we had last year, I believe, might have been the strawberry festival, on Friday night, we had a tent that was actually on the grass area. So tie downs for that sort of thing in the hardscape itself to use on various sized things is something to, to put in the mix of, you know, or the to-do list of things.
Absolutely. And we've done that on past projects before. We've also done stuff where we've actually integrated a Christmas tree stand that was, you know, hidden in the, in the hardscape and you just popped up a paver and plop in the tree. So all those type of things that we would want to make sure that we're incorporating all of that information so that, so that, yeah, you don't have to have those big barrels, you know, to hold up a tent or any of that kind of stuff. Those are all things that we can absolutely integrate with a project like this. So, great question.
Right. And in general, all of the things that have been brought up by the various folks in the audience and that sort of thing, I think they're all very positive comments. That's all I have. Thank you.
This is Marshall.
Go ahead. Can you go ahead?
Yeah, we'll, we'll come back. Let me, go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yes, we'll come back.
I'm fine. I just had another real quick question. I know that Mr. Schilling touched on, like, the trees. What happens when they get large enough to where, like, their roots? I know, like, my trees, they're, you know, you know, break up my sidewalk. What happens? I mean, with that?
Yeah, that's another great question. It's kind of a two-fold thing where, A, it's picking the right tree, because different trees' roots grow in different ways. Some have more-
I would not know that.
Yeah. So some have more spreading roots that will heave the pavement, others grow down a little bit deeper. The other thing that we can do, there's a lot of stuff, it's about the infrastructure that you're putting in. So where we're, you know, where we're showing trees that are kind of more in paving, there's different systems, like a silvacell system or structural soil that you can put in. Basically, when, when the, the roots are heaving the pavements because they're suffocating, they're trying to get air. So there's different ways that you build up that profile before you put the paving in there that prevents that from happening.
How long does that typically, could it last?
Indefinitely. I mean, that's, yeah, it's, it's just making sure that there's enough water and oxygen to the tree roots so that they're not trying to heave the pavement.
Okay.
And, and that's the reason that we also have, we try to locate a majority of the trees within plant beds so you don't have to do that. But anywhere where we're, where we do that, we would definitely recommend those, those products.
Well, I think you did a great job. I originally was not thinking one way or the other, but with everybody, with the citizens' comments, talking about the grass, they want the green space, you know, I thought, okay, well, maybe we're, we're wrong here. And, but seeing how, I think that really will bring more people downtown, and it, it is more accessible and usable. I, I tend to change my mind on that now and go that direction to where I think it's probably a good thing.
Yeah, and I'm glad that you mentioned the accessibility, because that does improve it for any people, you know, even if it's just mothers with, you know, kids in strollers or people in wheelchairs. It doesn't matter what it is, it usually tends to be a more accessible place for everyone.
Mr. Pierce?
You had mentioned before about, and I know I'm going into the week- But you had mentioned before about pavers, brick pavers that have been around for hundreds of years. I was just looking at what the benefit of stamped concrete versus the brick pavers you were talking about were, kind of like contrasting them, because that might be a decision we make, and I just want to have the facts on that.
Typically, the clay brick pavers are going to be more expensive because we're actually also setting them on a concrete base. So it is a, it's basically like, and we've done this on a number of projects where you've done, you know, a brick parking lot or a brick alleyway where you have lots and lots of traffic on it. You know, it's going to be a very robust system. But because it's a, a natural material, it doesn't absorb the water the same way that like a concrete paver would, or just a stamped concrete where eventually you're going to get cracks and then you get the freeze thaw. The, the bricks just always tend to outlast that, that system. But it is a more expensive, you know, way to, to pave the plaza.
Thank you.
Mrs. Snead, have any additional questions?
Just a really quick one. I, I think if I heard Jeremy correctly, we, we are not wanting planters. So along the edge, are those permanent plantings? Are they just there for aesthetics in this design? Or are you proposing planters anywhere? Like along, are those, am I looking at the top of trees, of planters along this, the sidewalk, what I would call the sidewalk?
Right there.
Right there, yeah.
There will be some planters, just not the one, you're, Jeremy, you're talking about the ones that are like right on the corner in the blocks, like right out here.
Yes, just the hall, yeah.
Okay.
Square one. They tend to get targeted.
So just a different type, okay.
By vehicles.
Okay. I just was asking, a couple's along there. No, I, I, I do like this plan. I do share some concerns about not wanting to block much of the mural, because that is something that is, you know, you know, Troy is known for, so, but other than that, I like it. I'm not crazy about the water feature just because of safety concerns. I like the idea of a water feature. I'm just not sure if I like something like that. But yeah, that's my only, only concerns. Overall, I, I like it and I do like the accessibility of it and the usefulness of the parts of it.
Mrs. Boswell?
I just have a couple of comments. I like the concept. I'm not a big fan of the water feature either. I feel like we have a fountain in the center, but I do like that it's a gathering place. I like that there's several areas that you can go to. I love the fact that at the backside, that there's a better entrance to it, because along the alley, you had to go right next to that stinky dumpster, which I wish we could find a way to hide that somehow, because it really gets nasty in the, in the summer as it heats up. But there's no place else for them to go. So I get it. But I like that there's a, a better entrance into it rather than going right next to that. I love the seating. I love the trees. I feel like if we've got these low-covered planters, I think Troy's known for its flowers, too. I would love to see flower planters along with the low green stuff, but I think it's beautiful. I definitely was asked by a few people that, to make sure that people with walkers, wheelchairs, canes can walk easily on it. That was another, you know, a smooth surface, not to have any trip hazards.
Mr. Shager?
I need to come up.
I thought that. I, no, I would concur with most of the sentiments here today. The, you know, for years, Mayor Beamish said that this was the living room of Troy, and we need to, anything we can do to make it accessible. And the, Mr. Emrick's comments about his kids coming downtown, I, we walk downtown, go to the farmer's market, maybe that could relocate to here. I know there used to be the mayor's Festival of Nations that hasn't happened for a while. During the period of time that we were here, I received a text message from a Troy Chamber of Commerce member who showed some pictures of the plaza for a June concert. And it really is kind of amazing how tore up the grass did become. So I think the functionality of the bricks would be better. As far as the water feature, I would encourage people to Google or Facebook or lurk at Oxford, Ohio. They have a very similar, about six fountains. It's very well utilized. They actually have their farmer's market that goes around that area. So it would, I would encourage people, I think there is a number of resources where you could see that. Similarly, there's one at the Green, I think that is very comparable to what this looks like to me. I don't know if you guys were involved with those, but I think that it would be encouraging to bring people downtown. And I would say, you know, the seating is certainly, the permanent seating is definitely needed. And I kudos to you guys. And that's all I have to say.
Just, just a couple of questions or comments. Last year, when we started looking at the redoing of downtown, the people that actually do the Friday, or sorry, the concerts there on the weekends, they said they get anywhere between five and 800 people a night on that. So I mean, it, and they do, they fill up, where all the cars are parked, they fill up all that. And of course, the Proudy Plaza as well. So that's, that's, we want to make sure that we can accommodate a, a crowd of those sizes. And then the other question is, is that I have not had an opportunity to visit our new restrooms. But do they have changing areas in those restrooms? So if you bring your, your children downtown and they play in this fountain thing, which I'm not a big fan of either, I think the fountain of a splice- a splash pad would probably be better in a, in a neighborhood park like McKay Grace or something of that sort. But, do our restrooms have changing areas? Now, you have a kid in there, he plays in the, he or she plays in the fountain, sopping wet, what do you do with them? You know? So, you know, can you, is there a place for them to change into dry clothes? I, you know, I don't know. I mean, that's just, it's been a long time since I've had, you know, children that size. And so, then my question is, is do we have changing areas in the, in the new restrooms?
We don't have separate changing areas, but they're big enough because they're ADA accommodable.
I mean, you have stalls, you mean, that?
Uh, no, they're, no, they're single. They're just, they're just one room each.
Okay.
But, they are large enough to, to be ADA compliant. And so, with that extra space, somebody's able to, especially a smaller child and mom or dad.
Okay. I just, I don't know. I had no idea on that.
Yeah. The other, the other thing, I do want to clarify, and Christian can, can clarify a little bit more, but you mentioned a splash pad. This is not a splash pad. It is not intended to replace any kind of splash pad that, you know, will be, I'm sure, very thoroughly discussed during the Park and Rec Master Plan process. This is a simple, as Mr. Seaver stated, yeah, Oxford is a good example, and not the only example, but of a very simple design, very low-key. You know, you don't even have to cap it when it's off for people to be able to sit on top of it. It's just a casual feature. It's kind of like, you know, when you brought out the hose and the sprinkler in your front yard and the kids ran through it. That's basically what you're talking about here. So, it, it is night and day different than what a splash pad would be.
Okay.
Thanks to Mr. Seaver. I, he brought up the farmer's market. So, will there be electrical outlets for different things that are going on? Because I know, I'm familiar with the farmer's market and they need a lot of them. And that'd be a great place for it.
Is there anything you might add to Mr. Turner's description of the fountain? Can he convert, not convert, because they can use splash pads?
It's not a splash pad.
I think really the defining difference is that it's, it's a scale of the fountain and sort of its intended use that, you know, a splash pad is going to be geared towards a larger number of people and, you know, have the ability for, you know, changing rooms and all that kind of stuff. The scale of this is going to be such that it's, it's, what we try to do is design spaces that if anyone, whether it's a kid or an adult, wants to interact with that fountain and touch it, that it's safe to do so, that it's encouraged. It's not something that, you know, it's not a replacement for the fountain that's in the square, you know, which is not accessible. So, it's kind of just a way that kind of has a link to it. And, you know, that was something that we tried to do by the circular nature, kind of drawing upon what's there already. So, it's really to complement that existing fountain and just allow people that, yeah, you can stick your hand in it, you could run through it, but it's not really a place that, you know, you're going to go swimming. You know, there's no standing water or anything like that. So, it's just these little pop jets that come up. And, yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's just more of a draw for people than anything. And, and yes, this is a great opportunity to put as much, you know, outlets, infrastructure, that kind of stuff. That's one of the benefits. It's all the stuff that you don't really see, but makes a huge difference. So, absolutely.
Mr. Rizzo, can I ask? Just, so, talking about the water feature, what is the difference in your mind in putting in a water feature that is at ground level like that for interaction that you can walk through versus something that's a water feature but is raised somewhat so that you can still touch it but not run through it?
You lose space.
That's, that's it. I mean, if.
I get that. But, I mean, there are some spaces along the edges there.
And, and then when it's winterized, you kind of have a big empty kind of hole.
Yeah.
So, I think what we try to do is create a space that when that thing is off, you don't even know that there's a fountain there. So, it just helps it become a space that's really multifunctional. So, you just get a lot more functionality out of it is kind of the, the biggest, you know, component for that.
Yes, an excellent.
One last shot, gang. Anybody got any questions? All right. Council needs to, we'll take a poll like we did the other day to whether to continue on this venue or this route going forward. And we'll just start right here. Mr. Witten, any last comments and?
Any last comments? Like I said, I'm generally in favor of the plans that we have in place at this time. But, I, I think there were some good public comments, some small details. But, overall, I like the plan.
Mr. Twist?
I'm for it.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes, generally in for it and incorporating all of the, or whatever comments that have come from the public is a good thing. So, yeah.
Mr. Pierce?
I think this would be good for our community. I'm for it.
Mrs. Marshall?
I just want to be clear that this, and nobody mentioned it, so I'm thinking this is at another time. Like, the traffic pattern, the switch, that has nothing, we're not talking about doing anything with that. This is simply Proudly Plaza, right?
This was, well, POD only focused on Proudly Plaza. But, it's good to note because, you know, you've got the, you're, you're all in favor, it seems like, of the arch Proudly that in that area, the recommendation is to reduce that to a single lane coming eastbound on West Main Street, similar to what we have in the other three directions. So, that would only help with any safety of crossing between the one block to, or the one corner over to Proudly Plaza. But, POD did not do any of that kind of work. So, what you saw in one or two of the renderings still shows the current lead-in on West Main Street, but we anticipate that will change. There'll be more on that on the 10th.
Okay. Because that, that's what I have concerns about, are, are that. But, I don't have any concerns about the plaza tonight. I think that's great.
Mrs. Snead?
And just to add on to that, so, we will see this part because we've all pretty much said we'd like it incorporated in next week's presentation.
Yes.
And yes, I am in favor of this generally.
Mr. Schilling?
I think that, I think that Proudly Plaza needs to be redone. I'm in favor of much of what's done there. I say, again, express some concerns. Permanent seating, I think, is a great idea. I'm not a, still sold on the, the fountain area thing. But, overall, I think it has, you know, a lot of merit on that. So, I think we should look at, continue to look at this thing and, and fine tune it.
Mr. Seaver?
To quote my friend, Mr. Twist, I'm for it.
Mrs. Westfall?
I like it also. What's tea for you?
Okay. I think unanimously, move forward with what they've been doing and we'll go a little farther down, see what they, if final plans come up. And I'm glad to see, I don't, I didn't know that we had to have a archway for Mr. Proudly to correct the one quadrant that is unusual coming into the square. But, if that's what it takes, I'm for it.
And we will coordinate with POD and LJB. I think the one thing that we'll definitely look at and maybe even have some detail, a detailed rendering, maybe on the landscape plan in front of the mural, so you get a better idea of, and maybe that can be tweaked a little bit to minimize any, any blockage of the mural.
With that.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Well, we have access to this presentation.
This will be on the website tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning, okay. Slides and all that, just like last week. All right.
I'm just a former, I'm a quick adraer, but I.
Yes, sir.
Do you hear me?
I just confirmed, but as many of you know, there is a series of bricks that were purchased by individuals or organizations that are at the entrance to that. And they're going to be incorporated in, right, is what you just told me. As, as much as they can, because I think the vast majority of them, I don't even know if they're identifiable. I mean, they're pretty much, a lot of them are flat brick now, but we will do what we can. We've looked for a chart that shows who, who is where and what. We, if somebody has that, we'd love to see it. And, and then we would do what we can to, to replicate that.
I'd like to thank POD for coming to their presentation, people from Main Street, Park Board Commissioner, Park Board Director, City Staff, Commissioners, Chamber of Commerce, and all the input from the public. I think they're good. They've taken suggestions before. And hopefully, they'll put all those together and we'll have a very, very nice community gathering center downtown. With that, I think we're going to be adjourned. There is a meeting tomorrow, if you want to come, for the layout.
For Adams Street.
On Wednesday, Wednesday, not tomorrow. To look at the schematic of the roundabout at Staunton and Adams. And the next council meeting of the whole is on March 10th. We will meet on March 3rd.
March 3rd is council.
Council, March 10th is committee of the whole.